Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We do have a quorum present. All members are here along with our student representative. At this time, I'd like to call on member Peter Bickford to lead us in the pledge, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer, for the motion. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer, for the second. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Any questions? I think we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have unanimous approval with the student rep incurring. Move to approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, April 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes of April 20th, 2021? All right, we'll move for the vote for approval of the minutes of the closed session, April 20th, 2021. Have unanimous approval of that set of minutes?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, April 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the business meeting of April 20th, 2021? All right, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of the business meeting minutes of April 20th, 2021. We have unanimous approval with the student rep incurring. Thank you. All right, we have no one signed up for public comment this evening. I would like to acknowledge the many emails that board members have been receiving over the past few weeks. I'd like to thank all those who have emailed us and assure those who have written to us that all the, all board members and the superintendent are reading all emails. Thank you for submitting your public comment that way. Does anyone, any board member wish to comment on public comment at this time? Move to old business. There's no old business this evening, so we'll move to our first item of new business, and that's consideration of the consent agenda. And we have Mr. Scott Bakel, our supervisor of purchasing, presenting this evening.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have seven items for your review. These items have been reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for elementary math core resource to LearnZillion, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $2,182,300. Elementary math core resource to the Math Learning Center at a cost of $90,660. DBQ online digital curriculum platform renewal to the DBQ company at a six-year total cost of $145,125. Class renovations at Springfield Middle School to GRC General Contractors LLC at a cost of $698,409. Professional Design Services modular classroom renovations at multiple schools to Knoll Clarion Hall Associates, Inc., at a cost of $111,005. Data warehousing, software maintenance, and support services renewal to Power School Group, LLC, at a cost of $62,417.88. And bottle fillers and water fountains to Apple Specialty, Inc., at the unit prices listed.
Thank you for your motion, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions for Mr. Bakel? Mr. Evans, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. First one about the LearnZillion, $2 million, that's a very large dollar amount. Could you elaborate on what other math resources there are for the K through pri, K through five programs? Yeah, something that might be similar in nature to what we're, what are, what are, what else is currently being used?
Other resources currently being used in our district in K through five mathematics include a range of high-quality materials that are not all-inclusive, if you will. So an elementary teacher in any given unit may need to pull from as many as 10 different resources to prepare for their lessons for a unit of study. We are currently, for this year, when we went to a distance learning format, we did not have anything digital prepared in, in that format to be ready for total digital learning. And so we did, for this past year, purchase, it, it did happen to be from the same vendor, LearnZillion, but not the same curricular materials that teachers did have access to this year that included some slide decks and problems for students to work through. We also use materials called exemplars, which are a collection of problems, tasks for students to work through. We use daily math routines. Teachers have kits for those as well as thinking routines that they use on a daily basis to open their lessons. So each of these things get pieced together right now, a thinking routine next to a, a task, next to a facilitation of that task, to practice, and each of those right now is coming from different resources that piece together to create our, our current math curriculum.
Thank you. And yeah, because I, I've actually spoken to a couple of teachers about that, and they, they said that it's not easy finding some, the one-stop shop or whatever, and this is, I guess, something that has been badly needed. It's been quite some time since there has been something like that. Is that accurate?
It has, yes.
I think, I was going to say, we've been trying to pursue a math primary resource. The, the book or resources themselves are not our curriculum. We have our own curriculum who follow a line with the state standards. But I think for three or four years now, the charge has been, we need to find a primary resource. I love our elementary staff, and many of them are reading and love children and not necessarily mathematicians. And I think the setup we've had for a number of years now with the new state standards has been challenging for them because there hasn't been the traditional book company that, that we've been able to purchase books for. So this is a big step. We've been waiting for the right purchase. We've been wanting to do this for two or three years, and finally, things have aligned here to find the resources that we need. Go ahead.
No, sorry. And really, my only concern is, and you know, I, I see it as grant money, so that, I mean, at that point, it certainly makes sense, but I, I saw, I think it was a million or more dollars for the print material. Is there a need to have both of those, or can one do without the other?
Well, and that, we wrote that as a cost not to exceed. Here initially, you know, we, we, in talking with teachers and asking them, what is the need? You know, we did just come out of a year of distance learning, a lot of things digital. You know, certainly, we do believe that it is beneficial for students to have a blend of both. You know, you think about when I, when I walk, I know I'm adult, but when I walk into a meeting, I typically have my laptop and I have something I'm taking notes on, right? I have that place where I'm doing my thinking, and I have that place where I kind of maybe finalize my thinking. And so when we think about those opportunities for students to do both, certainly in grades three through five, where they are preparing for state tests that will be done digitally, they need to have those experiences. And on the flip side, I think students need the opportunity to make their thinking visible, to make math messy, and that's okay, and to draw it out and make their thinking visible. I talked with a couple of different teachers. One said, since, since a lot of her students have come back, she said, you know, I asked them to set their iPads aside and said, just, we're going to set those aside, and we're going to do math with paper and pencil today. She said, after so long on the iPads this year, she said, I learned more about my students' understanding of math in that, in that timeframe that day than I had learned so far, just watching what they were inputting on the iPad to that point. She said, I needed both. I needed them to have access to the paper. And so I look, I look at the consumables as an opportunity for kind of that math journaling. Again, making your thinking visible, you know, math, we have all different representations of mathematics. You can draw, you can make models, you can make tables, we can write equations, we can have hands-on manipulatives. And a lot of that is available digitally now. There are digital manipulatives and all those things. And at the same time, we have, we have learners, and I'd include myself in that, that need, need that hands-on component. However, you know, I, I do fully expect that over time, as any vendor would, they'll continue to enhance their digital platforms and things. And I think we'll have the opportunity to get feedback from teachers after year one and to make a decision. You know, maybe, maybe we do decide, primary students got to keep that paper, and maybe some of our older students, maybe we don't need all of the consumables after year one. So we really want to take in some feedback after year one and see where we stand with that.
And, and I appreciate that. Thank you. The only other question I have about the LearnZillion, it's part of grant money and four or five years that it's planned to be, that we're approving now. Is this something that we expect to absorb into the budget after grant money's gone, or?
I can answer that question. So the way that we designed this Title IV is recurring funds. So with Title IV being recurring, it allows us to continue to use Title IV every year. And by year four or five, that's where that 7% comes into in the operating budget if we continue to purchase the paper materials, the print materials for all grade levels. So when we designed this, we designed this with the intention that this would not be a hit to our operating budget, and that by using Title IV for recurring funds, that this would be a purchase that we could sustain as long as we chose to sustain it.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And then the only other question I have, switching gears, for the modulators, the, my concern is, one of the schools that are on the list for a modular is also one of the schools that may be affected, Smithburg Elementary, by potential closures. And I know, Dr. Michael, you, you kind of answered a question in email, and I, I'm pretty sure it made sense, but could you tell us that, my, my biggest concern, and I think some other board members are concerned, that are we going to close down a school to put them, and not saying that we are, obviously, that's longer discussion, is there a potential that we're going to close down schools to put kids in modulators? That's a concern of mine.
Well, we'd be moving, we're moving the two portables to Smithburg Elementary regardless whether Cascade closes or not. Our goal there is, Smithburg continues to fall between a two- and a three-round school. I think, as I explained in a response to, to the board members, all of our elementary schools that have any amount of age on them have been built when we only had half-day kindergarten. So let's say a four-round school would have been built with two kindergarten classrooms, four first grades, four second grades, four third grades, four fourth grades, and four fifth grades. A school like that, as we've modernized schools, and you can look at all of our new schools all the way back to 2009, I think we've done this in every school, actually predated pre-K at that point, so we've actually had to go back and readdress pre-K at some schools. Pangborn Elementary, we've added portables there, but we haven't really changed the makeup of it being a five-round school, but we've added pre-K, and our hope there is to have five pre-Ks. So similar to a couple of the schools on the list, Fountain Rock and Smithburg Elementary School. We're going back now that we have full-day kindergartens. That school, four-round school that had two kindergartens, now needs two more classrooms to make it four kindergartens. And generally, pre-K doesn't run quite as many, so that type of a school might need two or three, or could be as many as four pre-Ks added to it. So in the case of Smithburg, I think is your question, it falls between a two- and a three-round school. It was built as a three-round school with half-day kindergarten in mind. So with the portables, long-term, we'll be able to address a classroom for all three kindergartens and at least two pre-Ks. And regardless whether Cascade closes or doesn't close, we'd recommend this move of the two portables. We have, I don't know, Mr. Rollins, if you can tell me, 60, 70 portables in the system, maybe more than that. So I mean, they're a, they're a bread and butter part of our infrastructure and used all over the county at many schools.
And, and that does make sense. I, I do appreciate the answer, and quite honestly, for me personally, I have some very serious safety concerns about kids and portables. We started to address some of those with what we're going to do over the summer with South High, until we could make sure that we have some kind of plan in place where the, the portables aren't as out in the open as they are. I, I don't think I could support that, so I just wanted to make that be known. Thank you.
Mr. Staffer. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
So could you explain to us the other things here? North needs portables because of the school population?
Absolutely. We have three portables there. Now, Mr. Rollins, if you'd come forward. We have three at North High off the top of my head, or is it four? Yeah, right off the end of the parking lot, the big parking lot in the back of the gym, going straight out, well, a little bit to the left of the gym, looking out towards the ball fields. There's three portables there we added several years ago. Again, you know, we're, we're heading to 1,600 kids there at North High potentially, although I think that number might get revised a little bit. Seems like South End's going to grow more than the North End as part of, you know, future redistricting, whatever you look at there, but.
And how many portables will be at Williamsport High School after you place these there?
Williamsport has at least three right now.
Three, so there'll be five.
Five.
And I was surprised at Fountain Rock, of all places.
Same picture there, just a teeny-tiny school, two-round school, built with a, in mind of kindergarten, being a one kindergarten classroom. That was an open school, so a lot of strange cut-ups of walls and things that we've added in there. You know, it's just a challenge of how some of those schools were built in the 60s, excuse me, in the 70s.
And what about Tech, Tech High?
Tech High, we're looking onto our diesel program, and we've continued to add academic teachers there. Part of our thought strategy there is potentially, instead of building classroom space with our diesel programming class, maybe we invest more in the shop space. And since the automotive diesel groups aren't, and the auto body and carpentry electrical construction aren't regularly in the classroom, like, you know, 180 days of the year, they might be able to share several portables, and maybe we could free up some classroom space being built in that design. So that'll be kind of a wait-and-see, what happens there exactly. We might even want to add two more portables, or we might end up putting some classroom space in the new design of the building.
And you mentioned in an email that there were six, or, it says there are six. You mentioned in an email to us that there were five. What's the other place besides North, Williamsport, Fountain Rock, Tech, and Smithburg Elementary? This, this?
I may have miscalculated. It should be on the list, it should be on the sheet.
Smithburg, North High, Fountain Rock, Williamsport High, Tech High.
I, my memory fail, I mean, Mr. Staffer. They're listed on the, on the cover, on the sheet here, the ones that are getting the portables.
I'm lost in, because I, I know five, North, Williamsport, Fountain Rock, Tech, Smithburg Elementary.
We're taking one to Salem Avenue, too.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there we go.
Because the proposal there said six locations, and I only wear, was where five.
That one's going to be finished this, this, this summer.
And Salem Avenue is overcrowded, too?
Oh, yeah. We, Salem's a school we've dealt with probably four or five times. Again, it's not new homes so much in Salem as it is multifamilies living together. We keep thinking economic times might change, and that might kind of neutralize itself or kind of spread itself back out, but it just doesn't seem like it does. If you recall, when Salem Avenue was built, even while they were going through the renovation and addition, it was built as a four-round school, and right in the middle of it, the county commissioners and school board, just a little bit before my time being involved in facilities, switched at the last minute, made it a five-round school. But again, undersized for pre-K and undersized for kindergarten when it was done. I don't know what, that's probably 20-plus years ago already for Salem. So Salem, we added three portables there on a nice deck, kind of a four quad thing, and we planned for an additional portable to go there someday, and we have that. It also has several special ed, specialized programs there that occupy in full-size classrooms.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Gassford?
Thank you. One of the things that I'm concerned about being in facilities is, we've, we've talked about this with these portables, the safety and security of these, because they are outside, and a lot of times, they don't have enclosures to get to. Can you address that and how that's going to affect budget-wise, you know, adding that security on top of this, or is that already built into these, these, these numbers?
I think each year, we've been trying to fence in more of our portables, so, and some places, it's not appropriate necessarily to fence them in. More fence in the whole playground area that would be inclusive of the portables we have. I think in all of our elementary, not our secondary portables, but all our elementary portables, we have a monitor that the teacher can see who's outside the door, and also can see students going into the building for the younger students. I don't think we've made that investment in middle school and high school.
I know.
Mr. Ganley, I think's probably out in the lobby. He might be able to answer that question. Well, we'll just get an answer for the board members.
Is that it?
That's it.
Anyone else have a question? I have two questions. My first question is with regard to number four, class renovations at Springfield. Have we used this contractor in the past without issues? We don't have any concerns or reservations with this choice?
No, they've done a lot of work for us.
They've done a lot of work for us? Okay, and similarly, the Professional Design Services, number five, for the modular classroom renovations at multiple schools, same question, have we used this firm in the past?
Yes.
Without issue and with satisfaction in the work?
Yes.
We have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? I'm going to move to the vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
I asked, Mr. Ganley does speak, maybe while he's here. You can go ahead and have the vote, and then Mr. Ganley can add comments about safety and security of the portables, or either way.
Mr. Gassford, will it affect your vote one way or the other if we?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ganley, come forward. We can wait.
Mr. Ganley, do you want to go ahead and ask a question, or want to take the vote?
Yeah, we're going to ask a question.
Okay. They're asking questions about safety and security of the portables. I shared that we have fenced in some of the portables. We've looked at that with some others. Some are inclusive within playground areas as well. Also, I thought at all the elementary schools, we've done that camera monitor where the teacher can see right outside the door if it's a blind area, as well as seeing to back into the building. I didn't think that we had that in middle school and high schools, and that was just kind of the question. I'll let Mr. Gassford follow up with, after your response.
We, we put them in all the elementary school portables, and as a new portable was placed on site, we had a few relocations this year, and that's part of the setup plan. So if a new portable is set up at, you Salem, for example, when that comes off the truck, when they put the fire alarm in, adding the portable security is also including the monitor, so they can watch the cameras into the school. Now, the new construction at Western Heights, we did add that, so we, we're starting to extend it to the middle schools, but the primary project was all the elementaries.
Thank you. I think you're calling for the question.
Yep. Back to the, back to the vote. So Mr. Bickford's motion is to approve the awards renewals and procurements, as read by Mr. Bickford on this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have five affirmatives, opposed, to an opposition, and the student rep confers, concurs with the majority. Thank you. Before we go on to the next agenda item, I have a question that kind of relates to our discussion of the portables. Having taught in an elementary school that had portables, and knowing that every conceivable space was used for instruction, whether it be a closet or converting tote room, what options do we have when enrollment is such that there's no usable space within a building but for the movement of a portable? And what goes into the decision to have a portable, and what goes into the portable?
Most schools, I historically have used portables for fifth grade, so we put our oldest students in portables, thinking they would be the most mature students to move in and out of the building, rather than some of the smaller children. There are some schools, again, because of design, there was no place built for music or art or orchestra, something like that, so there are some schools that have things like that. There are times that the portables aren't needed, and sometimes they'll be used for meeting space, PTA space, things like that. But generally, what I've seen in elementary, the primary use for portables is for older elementary students, generally, like I say, fifth grade.
Thank you. Our next item of new business is the consideration, first reading of proposed changes to policy BDE, board member standing committees. Mrs. Earthsprung, our deputy legal counsel and the staff liaison to the policy committee, coming forward.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. The policy committee conducted a review of policy BDE, which describes the role, membership, and operation of standing committees of the Board of Education at its public work sessions on February 23rd, March 23rd, and April 27th, and took the following actions. Removed committee summaries because the exhibits to the policy, which the policy committee reviewed and offered no changes to, contained this information. Modified the policy to make clear that there could not be a quorum of board members present at a standing committee meeting. Added new language on the requirements that must be satisfied under the Open Meetings Act. And provided guidance to staff liaisons to the committees on the process that is to be followed with regard to minutes generated by standing committee. The policy committee is requesting the Board of Education's approval of the first reading of this proposed change to policy BDE. The committee members and I are available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy BDE entitled Board Member Standing Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy BDE. changes to policy BDE entitled Board Member Standing Committees. All those in favor of approval? We have a unanimous vote with a student member concurring. Our next item under consideration is the first reading of the rescission of policy JOA, release of student records, and of proposed changes to policy JOB, student records.
The policy committee is conducting a comprehensive review through an equity lens of the student section of the Board of Education's policy manual. The committee conducted a review of policies JOA and JOB, both of which concern student records, at its work session on April 27th and took the following actions. Combined the policies because both cover student records and made policy JOA the background statement in policy JOB. Added language to policy JOB informing individuals of their right to request amendments of their student record, and struck language currently in JOB and recommended removing the language to the accompanying administrative regulation. The policy committee is requesting the Board of Education's approval on the first reading to rescind policy JOA and to approve the proposed changes to policy JOB. The committee members and I are available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Erstong. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading to rescind policy JOA entitled release of student records and the first reading of proposed changes to policy JOB entitled student records.
Thank you, Mr. Vicfords. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Mr. Gessford?
Yes, thank you. I, I just, for, for my own, um, knowledge, I guess, I need to know how long do we, uh, uh, and I guess it would be under, uh, section 3A1, it says, or say 2, I'm sorry, records are maintained in hard copy. My question would be is for how long do we keep those?
So Maryland State requires different timeframes for different education records depending on what they pertain to. Um, so it can be anywhere, I believe, from maybe two years to 10, and I believe some records are actually maintained in perpetuity. Uh, but the, the Department of Education has a, um, has requirements that they set forth that we just comply with.
Okay. And then down on B1, it says the word WCPS authorized representatives. Who are the representatives?
That's a variety of individuals. It's, um, based on the FERPA, which is the federal law pertaining to student records. Um, I believe we actually discussed that and, um, discussed the possibility of putting more detail about who is an authorized representative in the regulation in case that changes throughout time. Um, but that's a term that is referenced, referencing FERPA, which it's pretty much school officials that have, um, a need for the records for official school purposes.
So do you think that we, it could be kind of a hairy situation when it comes to authorized per, representatives? Because could a teacher be a representative? Could it be an administrator?
Generally speaking, those would qualify as authorized representatives. Like I said, if it's a school official who has an educational need for the records, they would fall under that category. Um, again, it's a FERPA required, um, like FERPA says who can and cannot get records without consent from the parent. So if there was a question, it would come through the legal office and we would provide guidance to the teacher or whomever the, was asking the question as to if the person qualifies as an authorized representative.
So why was it changed to, from professional staff, from professional staff? I mean, is there, I mean, apparently, obviously there was a discussion because it was changed. I was just was kind of curious what.
Probably because a lot of times, you know, it's clerical staff. Student Services has people that are very specific in long-term records, and they wouldn't be part of professional staff necessarily. So I think it's just referring to clerical staff. Could also be part of those people that would be authorized representatives. You go to any high school and you're trying to get a copy of your, you know, uh, grades or something like that, to go through a process or get transcripts sent to somebody else. It wouldn't necessarily be a professional staff that would do that. More likely would be, uh, you know, a register or somebody like that that would do that. So maybe that was the thinking. I wasn't at the policy committee, but probably because professional staff generally refers to administrators or teachers, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that term's just more inclusive.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move to the vote. We're voting on the approval of the first reading to rescind policy JOA entitled release of student records and the first reading of proposed changes to policy JOB entitled student records. All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote with the student member concurring. We have one more first read to consider. It's the first reading of proposed changes to policy JC, permission to attend school out of home school attendance area.
Good evening. So this is the third policy we have for you. Uh, again, the policy committee is conducting a comprehensive review of the student section through an equity lens. The committee began its review of policy JC, which is permission to attend school out of the home school attendance area, at its public work session on February 23rd, and continued its review at subsequent work sessions on March 23rd and April 27th. The committee took the following actions. Placed the policy in the updated format by adding a purpose statement, a background section, and a definition section. Defined the term designated attendance area, which is used throughout the policy. Added notice about three levels of appeal, and amended the policy to no longer permit special permission rescission because of a student's behavior or grades that are unsatisfactory. The policy committee is requesting the Board of Education's approval of the first reading of the proposed changes to policy JC. The committee members and I are available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Erstong. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JC entitled permission to attend school out of home school attendance area.
Thank you, Mr. Vicfords. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion? Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, section C, rescission of special permission on page two there. Um, on part one, it, the beha, one of the criteria that, or two of them that I'm questioning is behavior and grades if they're unsatisfactory. Um, it's only attendance that could rescind that permission. Is there a reason why behavior and grades were taken off of that?
Do you want me to answer? I just, okay. Um, so that was a change that was recommended by, um, our supervisor of equity. I'm not sure what, what Allison's.
Supervisor for Equity and Excellence.
She saw that as a, a potential issue on an equity level.
What would that issue be?
There are disparities for student discipline, um, and there are issues in terms of, um, transportation for some students. And, uh, at a, considering it on an equity basis, um, those were two areas where she thought that, um, there could be, as I said, a discrepancy based on the student's, um, race as opposed to based on their performance.
I, I personally, maybe this is me being naive, I, I'm pretty sure that our teachers wouldn't necessarily do that. Obviously, there's imperfect people out there, but, I mean, the, the transportation alone, I mean, the, we provide transportation to their in-home, so if there's difficulty with transportation, then that would be, I'm, I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, they would, they have to get their own transportation to a school out of their area, right? So I don't, I don't get why the transportation would be part of it. I, I personally think if we have a student going to another school that's not his own home school, that's, to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, I very well could be, I don't know, um, that to me seems like it's more of a privilege than a right. And if your behavior and your grades are not up to par, I think it would be fair to rescind that, that privilege to go out of your home school. So I, that one is a sticking point to me. I understand the rest of them. I, I don't think I support those changes.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Evans. Anyone else? Mr. Gessford?
Yeah, thank you. I, I'd also like to just say the same thing. My question was on that also, especially the behavior part. I think, um, is it, you know, is it, is it possible that the, the committee could go back and reevaluate that, or is?
The committee will look at it before it comes to a second read. Yes.
We, we can take your feedback back to the committee, and it might be also worthwhile having Allison come in to, since, since we're going to be making several changes through an equity lens, it might be good to have her in attendance at one of, at some of these meetings.
Yeah, I mean, she could definitely speak to it.
Yeah.
Better than I can. I, we did have pretty extensive discussions about it in our committee meeting, um, but she can speak to it much more knowledgeably than I can on that equity piece.
Now, I, I would go and say that you're right, there are certainly disparities. I don't, I, again, there certainly can be disparities between what one teacher sees as a issue compared to another. So at that point, I think it'd be fair that if we're going to keep behavior and grades, I think we should keep them and maybe list the criteria that would constitute that being rescinded. I would be fine with that, but to go and, like I said, to me, this is a, and, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, I really don't know. Um, again, to me, this is a privilege and one, if the grades aren't there, you know, is that because they're traveling so far that they don't have time to get home and do their homework, you know? Maybe they need to go back to their home school so they have more time to get their grades and study. Um, you know, that, that's just kind of my thought there.
Now, thank you for your feedback. We'll bring it up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Evans. I think it's, it's, uh, would be good to note, too, that this policy was last looked at and amended in 2003. So we're looking at a policy that was last looked at 18 years ago. And, uh, as Mrs. Erstong said, we're looking at things through an equity lens as a result of the board's, uh, equity policy and the state board's equity policy, so.
I understand, yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback. Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I was just wondering, does this policy, um, refer to students that go to different schools other than their home school, um, for special programs?
No.
No.
No, okay.
Special permission.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Right. Mrs. Erstong, would it be helpful, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but would it be helpful to give an example of why, um, a parent would make a request for special permission and what kinds of, um, special permission requests are granted?
Yeah, so, um, it's my understanding that a lot of special permission requests are made to accommodate childcare issues. So you might use a childcare provider that's located either near to one school or provides trans, provides private transportation to one school, um, or just to make it easier for after-school pickup. So I think we have a lot of those types of requests. And then there are also requests to attend certain schools because your home school might not offer a specific course, uh, that you are interested in, so you ask to go to another school in order to access that, um, course, that, that particular class. Um, so I mean, we did have discussions about the privilege versus right. Um, and I think that there are some sort of situations where the special permission is, uh, granted to assist the families in some way, but there are other cases where it really is a student need, and I think that was part of that discussion as well, that if the student really needs to go to this other school for whatever reason, um, that then holding them to this kind of higher standard, especially when there are disparities in how certain, um, aspects of student life are treated, uh, that it, it creates inequity. But I do think that having Allison here to speak more thoroughly on that topic probably makes sense. But I think, I mean, there are other reasons that you can ask for special permission, but I, I believe those are two of the.
Childcare is probably the most, most common.
Frequently, yes. Thank you, Mrs. Erstong. Mr. Gessford?
Yeah, thank, um, that brings up two questions, I guess, would be, and you may have just answered that when I said, or when you said about childcare, but my thought was how often does that happen, um, that we have a, have this request for, for moving?
I mean, obviously, we didn't have a lot of that this year, but historically, we've been at as high as 1,600, 1,700 special permissions. Uh, we really tried to pare that down, I think, when this policy was last written, because we were having students move into an area on special permission and then move other children out of the school to accommodate for growth of the school and things like that. So, um, you know, it's kind of a challenging piece of the puzzle. I think maybe, uh, Erstong, for the next uh, meeting, maybe we can just bring data. We could bring five years. I'd probably just skip this year, but, uh, five years worth of, um, totals special permissions. Obviously, ins and outs equal each other. Um, but some schools are heavily out, some schools are heavily in. Uh, a couple of key daycares are very large, and a lot of people rely on them for their daycare, have relied on their, for daycare, maybe on the way to work, things like that. But it's varied, uh, and I think there's a need to keep some. Uh, rain on it. We do try to accommodate parents as much as we can. I've heard hundreds of these special permission appeals over the years. Um, and again, I generally looked at space and what was fair, and if we could accommodate a student, we would. But if it was going to push the class to 27, 28, 29, it didn't seem fair for the students that lived in that attendance zone, uh, to drive those kind of numbers up. Um, you know, at one time, it was certainly looked at as a privilege to go, and you were, often I would describe it, and again, this is predates five years ago, but I heard appeals for Dr. Morgan, uh, Dr. Bartlett, and, and, uh, Dr. Wilcox. So I did appeals for years, but I'd often describe it as a privilege to be there. You're a guest in that school in a way, and that's probably the equity that we need to look at. Is it fair to consider these kids guests? Um, or are they part of the school and, and they should be treated as if they should be allowed to stay, uh, regardless of circumstances? So I think that's part of what we'll hear from Allison as far as an equity lens.
And the second part was, did the committee think about the redistricting and how that affects when, if we, if and when we do that? Because it, it's going to happen eventually in, in our time, but with the redistricting, the, you know, the area, how does that affect this policy? Is it, is it going to kind of overlap?
I don't think that the redistricting has an impact on the policy.
It's not going to have any effect.
Because the policy would exist outside of that. You're still going to have individuals who, for whatever reason, need or want to access a school that isn't in their attendance zone. Um, so, I mean.
We'll have like a firewall that will, it'll stop everybody just applying it, I guess, is what I'm saying, because you don't want everyone just to keep pounding on if you're already loaded in one school.
Well, and I think that's a legitimate reason for a principal to deny special permission. Uh, frequently, one of the most common reasons principals deny special permission is excess of class size or state rate of capacity of the school building.
As long as that is, you know, spelled out there that we have that option to say, well, we can't. I mean, that, that's.
There's a form that goes with the regulation of this. There's a place the principal signs. I'm assuming we're keeping all that part of it. Uh, and they generally list reasons why they're denying the special permission.
So before I, I move to the vote, I'd just like to say that, um, this will go back to committee for, um, another look, and we will be considering any feedback we get from the community, um, with regard to comment on the policy. The policy is posted, I believe, on the website, correct?
So the normal process is if, uh, the board approves the first read tonight, tomorrow there will be a notice posted, uh, with the language of this policy and asking for public comment for a period of at least 10 days. Um, and then depending on, I mean, this policy, because there has been quite a bit of discussion, it would go back to the policy committee for further discussion. Um, the other option is if the policy, if the first read doesn't pass today, then it wouldn't go on to public comment. It would go back to the committee, the policy committee, to reevaluate based on. the policy committee, to reevaluate based on just the thoughts of the board members. And then we would come back again for first read and then go through that process. If it passed, then get public comment. So it just depends on the outcome of the vote.
Understood.
Thank you.
So can we table this until the next time the, the policy committee has that opportunity to go back and reevaluate that?
I don't know that we would want to table it. I think we'd go ahead and take a vote on the first read and then act accordingly.
Yeah, and if it just doesn't pass first read, then it would go back to the policy committee, and then after making adjustments, come back to the board again on first read.
So we come back for another first read?
Right.
Okay.
Best thing to do would be vote against it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JC entitled Permission to Attend School Out of Home School Attendance Area. All those in favor? We have four affirmative votes. Those opposed, three in opposition, and the student rep concurs with the majority. So motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Erstang. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, President Williams, board members. Tonight, I have a couple guests with us. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. First of all, I want to express my deep appreciation for all of our teachers, the hard work they've done, not only in recognizing them this week, but throughout this year. They've just done an outstanding job in circumstances that I don't even know how to describe. I often say every day is a new day with COVID, and I think that's what many people have experienced as we've changed from virtual to concurrent learning to some places now fully five days a week with all their children in the classroom. It's been a very difficult year, but I am so grateful to all of our teachers for their hard work. So again, Teacher Appreciation Week, we want to recognize them. Also want to thank our ESP and our administrators, but this is a special week for Teacher Appreciation Week. Saturday was Principal Appreciation Day, and we certainly want to recognize that as well. But right now, I have Joni Burkhart with us, who is supervisor of professional learning. She's also our coordinator for Teacher of the Year program. I'm going to ask Joni to read a proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week on behalf of the board, and she's going to present it to Caroline Schlegel, who is our 2021, 2022 Teacher of the Year. We had an absolutely outstanding ceremony here a couple weeks ago. I think she's going to represent us well. We wish her all the best at the state level. And she is going to accept the proclamation on behalf of all the close to 1,800 teachers here in Washington County Public Schools. So with that, Ms. Burkhart, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce you to our current 2021, 22 Teacher of the Year, Caroline Schlegel, in recognition of all teachers. Caroline, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Joni, I would love that. Microphone on? Okay, perfect. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to represent the wonderful educators that we have here in Washington County Public Schools. During Teacher Appreciation Week and always, it is important to recognize the hard work that all of our educators do in this county in the service of our students every day. Our teachers are flexible, they are innovative, and they are reflective practitioners. So thank you to all of our teachers here in Washington County Public Schools. It is an honor to be alongside you. This year has been incredibly challenging for all of us, and you do an outstanding job every day serving the students in our community. Speaking of our community, I would like to thank our incredible community because WCPS, our local businesses, and our community members, our families, have reached out this week so far. It's been an incredible two days of people showering us with little tokens of appreciation, and that means so much in a time that's been so difficult. So I extend my thanks on behalf of all the teachers in WCPS for what you're doing to support us right now. Thank you so much.
And now I would like to present this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Education. It states, "Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Therefore, be it proclaimed that May 3 through May 7, 2021, is observed by Washington County Public Schools as National Teacher Appreciation Week in recognition of the impact teachers have on all of our lives." And now I'm going to present this to you.
I think we'll applaud all teachers in Washington. Board members, we also have a brief video tribute to our teachers we'd like to share at this time. To all of our teachers in Washington County for the hard work they do, not only this year, an unusual year, but every year. Caroline, again, we wish you the very best, and thank you, Joni, for presenting tonight. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Pickford?
I'm, I'm just curious, how's, how's driving the car? And how many, and how, how many times have you been to Chick-fil-A?
I have been to Chick-fil-A quite a few times. I don't know if I want to count them out loud in public, but the car is very nice, and I'm super appreciative of Hagerstown Honda for allowing me to drive it for this year. It's very helpful, and I'm really grateful for it. It drives really smooth.
I will say, I will say, having watched the video, now, you know, it's that, that television effect, now I feel like I'm meeting a celebrity. So congratulations.
Any number of celebrities to that video.
For our.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to bring forward Janice, Janice House. She's our School Health Programs Coordinator. It's not this week, but next week, on Wednesday, May 12, is recognition of National School Nurse Day. So our nurses are a big part of support to our students with health issues, obviously, and support. So, Janice, I'd like to turn it over to you at this time, to read a proclamation for all of our school nurses and their support.
Dr. Michael, members of the board, good evening. National Nurses Week is May 6 through May 12, ending on the birthday of Florence Nightengale, the founder of modern nursing. May 12 is also specifically designated as School Nurse Day. We want to show our utmost appreciation for the work the Meredith School Health and Washington County School Health Program staff are doing to keep our students and community healthy and safe. In recognition of School Nurse Day, I have the following proclamation to read. Whereas school nurses provide health services and health education in each of our schools, whereas school nurses promote optimal health and safety among our students to support academic achievement, and whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And therefore, be it proclaimed that May 12, 2021, is observed by Washington County Public Schools as National School Nurse Day in recognition of the important role school nurses have in student wellness and success. Presented this fourth day of May 2021.
And I think, since we won't be here next week to wish them well, I think it'd be okay to applaud our school nurses as well. So Janice, don't, don't go anywhere. So obviously, our own school nurses that we employ directly here with Washington County Public Schools, as well as our partner nurse program with Merediths, are a big asset to Washington County. Merediths has been a tremendous asset to us with the COVID shots and various things. I do want to give a shout out to Janice. She has been here almost night and day. Frequently, when I leave, she's in her office and many hours beyond that with our COVID response team. Jeff Prue, our chief operating officer, is a big part of that. We have six or seven staff members that work every day on quarantine, tracking down people, keeping up on COVID. And Janice has been a huge part of that, has dedicated hours and hours and hours of time beyond the normal day. I would say, well, I'll put our, our COVID response team up against anybody. They don't go home until we have made every effort to contact every student, every parent that potentially could be in need of being quarantined or staff member, or, you know, as we find out results about COVID. It's unfortunate, COVID is still very alive and well in Washington County. We've had, the last couple of weeks have been very difficult in Washington County, as we've seen probably more students and staff members that we've had to quarantine or have tested, and many students have turned up positive. So I can't encourage the community enough. We're not finished with COVID yet. Please do everything you can to help us prevent the spread of COVID. That's been our goal here in Washington County. We knew that COVID would exist, but we didn't want to be a site of spread. And I think we've been fairly successful with that because of our mask protocols, because of our distancing, because of all of our safety efforts. Again, Janice and her team have been a big part of that, so I didn't, I just want to extend a thank you, Janice.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the third part of my report, superintendent's update regarding the board's charge to, initially to the FEAC Committee regarding looking at all schools that were at 60%, were projected to be 60% capacity. And one of the challenges for Washington County Public Schools is the ability to maintain our capital assets. We have over 3.5 million square feet, over 1,100 acres in Washington County Public Schools. It's a significant amount of capital resources available to us. It probably amounts in the billions of dollars potentially if it all had to be replaced. And as good stewards of that, part of that is keeping those buildings up. It's also a need to maintain efficiency at our buildings the very best we can. So the board's charge to the committee was to look at these various facilities, again, that were at or below 60% capacity or were projected to be below 60% capacity. I reviewed the FEAC report thoroughly, examining the information that they've shared, and tonight I just want to share my three basic recommendations. We have a work schedule, work session scheduled for next week, where we'll spend several hours going through this in much more detail, and I'll be glad to respond to questions. We'll have staff members all there from various departments to help support and respond to questions as we go through that. But as I've reviewed the FEAC Committee's recommendation, at this point, I agree with their determination that Marshall Street, kind of a unique school, it serves some of our most medically fragile children. I would recommend that we don't make any changes there at this time. In my report, I did note that we might want to look long-term at that facility, as we might expand into three-year-olds at some point if there's a need for additional space. There's a lot of space in that building. It's, it's a very large building. There's only a few students in each room. The population there is significantly less than it used to be because many of these students are served in their home elementary, middle, or high schools. So I think it is a space and an opportunity that we want to keep an eye on. Is there a corner of the building, several classrooms of the building, that may be a specialized program or expansion of a specialized program, or for instance, a three-year-old program might just be an idea that we watch for. Clear Spring High School and Clear Spring Middle School are both declining in enrollment substantially. However, as I reviewed the report based on their location, there's opportunities for redistricting for these areas. The long-term projections for these schools, they're going to continue to decline. Particularly, the middle schools kind of remain fairly flat, but the high school's going to continue to decline. It was a little under 500 students when I was there as a teacher. I think it's about 450 now and heading for under 400 in the near future. So it's an opportunity we need to keep an eye on there. At what point is Clear Spring High or Clear Spring Middle too small? And is there a redistricting opportunity there, depending upon what the board does with other recommendations? My second recommendation would be to close Cascade Elementary School. I've been following this since the Fort, Fort Ritchie left there. I served in Dr. Morgan's capacity. She was a member of the, I'm going to lose the name of, not the BRAC Commission, obviously, but there was a, a group that met there every month for years. And it'll come to me, I'm sorry. And they actually invested a million dollars in the building. That was years and years ago. And we did do some upgrades through just some of the systemic project areas, you know, the roof, the boiler, chiller, that type of thing with some of that money, and hopes and hopes and hopes and hopes and hopes that the facility would grow. And it's now been 20-plus years. I know that the fort's been sold. We have looked at the Korean ownership and what the expectation is there, as well as the local ownership. I do think there'll be some renovation and a little bit of expansion, but it appears it's going to be, you know, a bit of a slow growth. Why in Cascade over any other area here in Washington County? I think it's a very difficult question to answer. Why there in absence of some other things happening maybe first? So my recommendation is to support the FEAC's recommendation to close Cascade Elementary. We struggled. We bounced it back up to a two-round school in 2010, and the enrollment has declined right back to where we were in 2010. So we've been kind of nursing this along for a number of years, and I think it's time to close the facility. I'd recommend that we maintain the facility and see what happens long-term with the fort property and other, other areas there. My third recommendation, I did make some changes to the FEAC's recommendation as I reviewed it carefully. You know, this is a very difficult one for me. I was part of the Hancock community. I still feel like I'm part of the Hancock community, spending four years of my life there, four great years of my professional life there. I drove from Boonsboro there every day, frequently on the weekends for events or to work in my office. I was at a Clear Spring Hancock game just last night in the rain. I don't know if they got the game finished. I was there for about an hour. It kind of rained off on, off on. Kids were on the field, off the field. I didn't know who to root for. I taught at Clear Spring for 12 years. I coached Clear Spring softball, but always kind of have a little favoritism towards Hancock, having been the principal there. So this is a very difficult recommendation for me. Having been the principal there in the time period that I was there, which has, at this point, been a fair time ago, many of the people that I'm hearing from or walked up and talked to me are former students when I was at Hancock. It was a small school then. We're back in the mid-'90s. I frequently was principal. We worked really, really hard to change things academically. That was to the credit of the staff, the students, and the community. The school was named a Blue Ribbon School of Excellence at that time, but not only as Maryland, but nationally, something to be very proud of. And they've continued many traditions, and I'm very proud of Hancock Elementary, Hancock Middle and High School students. But I've had to answer the question to myself, at what point is small too small? And as painful as it is, I think Hancock's reached that point. As we look at the projections and where it's going to go for the future, it's heading for an estimated 87 high school students, 87 high school students. The incoming class at, at South High next year will be five times bigger than the size of the school, maybe six times bigger than the size of all of Hancock High School, just the freshman class at South High. What point is small too small? The middle school will decline to approximately 81 students is our estimates at this point. We've met, I met with the town manager. He came down. He did a great presentation. I wish Hancock all the success in the world in their economic development plan. I think they've got a really good direction and great potential for that, but nowhere in that plan is there any significant amount of growth. Most recently, I'm sure the board saw what I call Black Rock PUD. It was on the board 15, 20 years ago, Rob, as Black Rock PUD, 550 housing units to go in there. We were watching that, and the potential of the East City High School, if you remember those discussions from 2025 years ago. And that property has sat vacant all this time, and now they're talking about 1,100 homes going in there of various types. That's the type of development that can generate a significant amount of students. The type of development that was shared in the presentation is just not... The type of development that was shared in the presentation is just not, if everything were to happen on the home side of that, townhouse side of that, single-family side of that, it still would not generate a significant amount of students in any way. Again, I wish them well. I think they're going to be successful with their economic development plan. I want to make sure, and you'll see the third part of my recommendation, maybe I'll save my comment for there. So, may be clear, my recommendation, different than the FEAC, is that the high school portion of Hancock Middle Senior High School be combined with Clear Spring High School and that they become one school. I think with the declining enrollment of Clear Spring and the addition of Hancock, I think it could be a very successful, still very small school. Long-term, whether names should change or anything like that, or other renovations for the future, they're all things for the board to consider maybe down the line. Those are some suggestions that have been made to me by some Hancock students and parents. I think the middle school, I think we could allow the middle school students to remain at Hancock. That's a little different than the FEAC report. However, I would recommend, different than special permission that we talked about earlier, I recommend that we have open enrollment where you don't have to apply. There are no conditions for a middle school student to join a Clear Spring Middle School. There are a few more opportunities there, Clear Spring Middle School, not significantly different, but just the wider range of students from our thriving, striving learner to our most thriving learner. It might just be a different mix that would accommodate students in a better way, but also ease in the transition if students are moving to high school. Again, that would be an option for middle school students. All middle school students could remain at Hancock. All middle school students, I don't think this would happen, could choose to go to Clear Spring at some point if that was their desire in middle school, either at sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, or again, not at all. The third part of my recommendation is that we look at utilizing the Hancock Middle Senior High School building, which is way underutilized at this point by, you know, it's well under, it's under 50% capacity at this point, and combine the elementary and the middle school together. That would provide the elementary with classroom walls, and currently they have an open school over at the Hancock Elementary. You know, because of small class size, it's not extremely distracting, but from a standpoint of just nice facility, I think the high school would make a great elementary, middle school. Again, classroom walls, they currently don't have restrooms in their classrooms like many of our elementary schools, and neither would they have at the high school. So, it'd be very similar to what they currently have. I think we could utilize the next couple summers to make some minor renovations here and make it an excellent facility. What I would use as my economic driving factor for the community would be an excellent, excellent pre-K to eight facility, that we at Hancock have the best, not only best pre-K eight program, but every grade level that you look at would be off the charts and would be something to be extremely proud of. And it's why businesses would come and be attracted, why people would move into the area, stay in the area, buy the current facilities, houses that are there. So, those are my recommendations. Again, a little bit alteration from FEAC. When we get into the work session, they've got a couple of transition plans for how the high school would move as well as the middle school would be allowed to attend Clear Spring Middle School. They would not be required to go there. And even some different thoughts of how and how quickly the elementary and middle school might be combined, be several options there to consider, and will not have to be part of the board's vote and could just develop over time. So, those are my three recommendations based on the FEAC report. I want to thank all of my senior staff as well as lots of other staff members. While this is only a 30, 40-page document, it represents hundreds and hundreds of hours since the FEAC report. We were here all the way through Saturday getting to finalize and some things like that, but a significant number of hours go on in this over the last several weeks. Everything's been taken very seriously. I understand the dynamics and the emotions of this, particularly in the Cascade Hancock area. As superintendent, this would be just so easy just to let this slide by and not get myself involved in this. I'm only a few years away. Who knows when it's less by my choice or God's that I won't be here as superintendent? But it's just something that my passion for children cannot let go. I think it needs to be addressed. I think we have reached the point in these two schools that small is too small, and I am absolutely confident that I as superintendent, as staff, as teachers, we can better address the needs of children, and I think that outweighs everything else, long history, emotion, everything else of all that's going on with that. And I'm sure most people will not agree with that, but that is my passion. We are bound by our duty to make sure we're providing the best education possible for our children for a future that's totally unknown. It is not going to be what it is today, and I think that education is going to be the gateway like it has for many generations for whatever is to come for the future. And I am confident these recommendations are in the best interest of children from my perspective, and I respect that the board and community, county commissioners, others certainly can have a different opinion. Our next steps in this process, on the 13th, next Thursday, the board has a work session scheduled. It's from 2:00 to 4:00. It'll be televised so people can see that live stream. It's not an open event. To my knowledge, it'll be here in this room, but it'll be available for everyone to watch live. All communications about the FEAC process, superintendent process emails that I've received, the board's received, have been kept carefully by Chad Chriswell and Rob Rollins, and the board received, I believe over the weekend, a collection of most recent information. I think our goal is by June 10th for people to submit all their written comments. On the 25th and 26th, the 25th, Tuesday, the 25th, we will have a hearing. Parents, community members, anyone interested can come to either hearing. They're not specific to Cascade or Hancock, but we're trying to centrally locate them so it might be convenient. But Hancock people are welcome to come to Smithburg High School to speak as well as Cascade parents are welcome to come to Hancock to speak on the 26th. But the board will be having two hearings. Both hearings will start at 5:00, and we'll be there till at least 7:30. And I would recommend to the board, if we can accommodate the speakers and there's more than can be accommodated in that time period, that we stay as long as possible to hear the public, and if necessary, we obviously can schedule additional public hearings. But Tuesday, the 25th, we'll be at Smithburg High School in the auditorium. We'll have more information about that because of the COVID restrictions. We'll have a whole process for how you will come in. You'll be able to sign up in advance, you'll be able to sign up that night. Again, we'll accommodate people, we'll move them into the auditorium, we'll listen to speakers, we'll probably exchange groups of speakers. Where speakers speak, one speaker will leave, another group will come in, that type of thing to maintain the six-foot distancing. Right now, based on all circumstances happening in Washington County, masks will be required. It'll be well organized so the board can hear the comments, and the public will have ample time to share. So, the 26th, Wednesday, will be a meeting in Hancock at 2:00. It will start at 5:00. But feel free to come anytime between 5:00 and 7:30. And again, I would recommend we stay longer if there's additional speakers. And currently, board members, your tent will be scheduled to make a vote on FEAC and the superintendent's recommendation at the business meeting on June 15th. Thank you. And I don't think I have any other comments for tonight's.
Have any other update for us, Dr. Michael?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. We'll move to personnel action. Dr. Pew.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael. As discussed earlier in closed session today, there's a number of staff changes for your consideration. At this time, I ask for your approval of staff changes.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the personnel actions that were discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions for Dr. Pew before we move to the vote? Okay, we're voting to approve the personnel actions as discussed earlier in closed session. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pew. We'll move to reports to the board. We have Mrs. Artif Cade here, who is our legislative representative. She's here to give us a briefing on the 2021 Maryland Legislative Session. Good evening, Mrs. Cade.
Good evening to each and every one of you, and I hope that I am not repetitive in talking about some of these issues. I feel that I've talked in every session about things like the blueprint, but I think that they must be talked about a little bit more, and this is my final report for the 2021 session. I have included in my report this very fine MAB summary of what happened and what didn't happen. And instead of trying to reference personally all of those different bills, I have submitted this to you. I suggest that you kind of keep it on your desk when questions come up because it's got it all, and it's quite clear and very helpful. So, I can start by saying this was a session like no other, but I say that every year. And this one, of course, was very different in that we could not go into the State House. We could not talk with our legislators in person. We could not advocate in person, and that was a negative, certainly. On the positive side, there was the fact that the hearings and the sessions were all very well record, available online, live, and we could follow up with them later. So, it was easy to get, to see what was going on in the committees, but it wasn't as much fun as it usually is because you really don't have the sense of the interaction that usually transpires. But of course, some big, big, big things happened, and of course, in our world, the big thing that happened is the blueprint. Veto was overridden and the, you know, it makes a new pathway for education in Maryland that is quite different in some ways, quite sensitive in a lot of ways, and I think that it will be here something you're hearing about all the time because there'll be many new requirements and changes and timelines and so forth that you'll have to meet. There'll be increased resources, as you know, for the, for working against poverty. You will have many more community schools, and those bring particular resources from the state, and in the community schools, there will hopefully be more community input and more supportive wraparound services so that you can be helping the most needy of your students in some very significant ways, in much more personal ways than you maybe have been able to heretofore. And as we've talked about, there's going to be a lot more pre-K. You have been leaders in the state already in pre-K and talking about the need for additional classrooms. There's this, part of that law is encouraged, well, expecting you to also be having pre-K available in some private facilities, and you'll have to say, show if those aren't available, why they're, not that, you don't have to show why they're not, but that if you're educating the children, you aren't depriving the private providers, which are mostly, I think, church-related pre-Ks that have been, many of them in existence for maybe as many as 50 years, some of them. There's going to be a lot of change in the career path for your students. By their junior year, they'll be looking to head off toward a career, a job-oriented curriculum that will help them come out of high school with certification for real, live-paying jobs or good, good preparation to go to college. And that's going to be, take a lot of new work on your parts. Teacher salaries will be increased, and you already made the biggest start, I think, in that, in getting your starting salaries up more than any other county in the state, as I understand, which is quite a thing for a small county in a rural, semi-rural area to do when you have other counties that are much more affluent and much larger. But that also, the teachers, the whole teacher career ladder is going to be an enormous change and an enormous readjustment and renegotiations and redefinitions because there'll be career ladders that lead to, lead teachers. There'll be all kinds of requirements for additional training and for certain kinds of education. I am not an expert in any of that. I know it's a big, big part of what you'll be dealing with in the next few years. The students, well, there'll be, there's a new and very undefined, but it is not yet existent accountability office that is going to have really some authority over both you, you as boards and the state board as well. This is one of the things that the governor was very keen to have in the bill and that us, the legislators as well. But this new accountability group will be able to kind of come and ask you just about anything, it sounds like, and can take steps to make, take, demand corrective action. We don't quite know yet how broad their authority is going to be, how broad their actions will actually be, but I think it's something you need to be aware is going to be developing. I don't think that the committee that is going to be naming that director has yet been formed, and so I would guess in the next few months, however, there will be somebody named to head that office, and they've been given a budget staff of, I think it's like 11 people, I'm not sure. So, they're not talking just here and there. They're talking about a pretty intense oversight body. The funding has really been assured through 2025 for the blueprint, and this is really pretty miraculous, and it has evolved partly because our state did not suffer economically as much as other, some other states, and then there have been allocations made in the Governor's Act for recovery, and then we've gotten considerable federal funds that are being applied. So, the blueprint is alive and well and is going to be in your face, kind of, I would say, and it's going to really, in many, many ways, offer wonderful new opportunities and new focus for your students. And again, the, your superintendent says it so well and so often that your responsibility, you know, is to the children, and that's been the emphasis all the way through in the blueprint, that we want the children in Maryland to have the opportunity to get the kind of education that is going to be useful to them in this world that we don't know the vision of. And so, I think we can celebrate the blueprint. It's going to be work, it's going to be change, but it is overall a very, very positive thing for our children. The Built to Learn Act also was passed, and it provides a lot of immediate money, $2.2 billion that the stadium authority can issue in bonds for school construction that is mostly appropriated to, allocated to the larger counties, and there really hasn't been any definition of how they're going to allocate the little the little bit that's left for the 17 smaller counties. So it's something you want to be watching out for because a few projects in, in two or three of the smaller counties could gobble up all of that money if, if, if they aren't looking out for a certain amount of fairness. But it, in the end of the, very end, the last day of the session, they did some updating of the blueprint. They did establish that the, the 2022 figures for state construction sharing are going to be valid through 2025, is my understanding. And they also put a, set up a work group to look at the construction costs and the cost of ownership and the cost per square, per student. And which may be a group that is looking toward smaller schools, less expensive schools and so forth. So that is something that your, your construction, your facilities people, I'm sure, will be following closely. One of our issues has been with children coming from juvenile services through the group homes. There was a new law passed which does establish that the juvenile services department, rather than the State Board of Education, will run the juvenile services schools. There's language in that law that certainly clarifies that the, the school from which the student is coming will be providing a lot of information about that student. So there'll be continuity of learning. It doesn't quite say that if they come into another school system on their way out of the juvenile services system, that, that, that material will also be passed along. But it's, it's somewhat implied. But it may be something that next year, we need to look at getting just one little tweak in that law to make that, to make that clear, especially if you're still having issues with that subject. There was a lot of talk about virtual learning, virtual education, virtual programs, virtual schools. And a bill that got very complicated and it was passed through the House and got over to the Senate and, and was very little preliminary. It didn't quite, no one quite knew what really was going on now and whether people had virtual schools or virtual programs. And, and, I mean, we knew we were doing virtual education, but there, there was just a whole lot of complexity. And, and whose authority did this, how much authority does the state have over you in terms of your virtual education programs? So I think fortunately, that bill did not pass. We had to hold our breath for the very last day, but it, it died on the Senate side, which is where we are more able to kill bad bills on the whole than in the House. We had lots of bills put in about SROs. And they were just, they came from left and right. And, and some said there shouldn't be any, some said this and some said that. And, and one bill was kind of put together. And I felt it was really quite a good bill as it, as it had come along, although it, it got too prescriptive even. And that bill got all the way through the House and again, did not pass in the Senate. But I'll mention a few of the things that it had in it in a minute. Another bill that we know will come back next year had to do with restraint and seclusion, in discipline of children in your school systems. And it's a very tough topic. I think finally, the legislature, legislators realized they really didn't know or understand quite what the need was sometimes and what the implications of saying, you can't do this or you can't do that. And so that bill died. And again, it will be back next year. There were bills in on dyslexia and there were bills in on seizures. Those did not go through. So what I've felt that was kind of an interesting way to look at it is to take, to be one of your students and to say, what is different? What will your students notice that's different from this session? Well, the first thing that I have, oh, no, I mentioned, oh, no. The first thing, the, gotta get to the right page. I mentioned the SROs. Although the bill didn't pass, there was a sense that SROs, really, each county has a right to, to work with the SROs, but they, but that there should be much more collaboration among and between the principals, the health officials, the mental health officials, the counselors, the SROs and the, and the agencies from which the SROs come so that everybody really understands what everyone's role is. And that, that it would be clear that the SROs are not doing school discipline, that they only intercede when there is probably likely to be bodily injury and that they aren't going to be the people that sign arrest warrants, which has happened in a lot of school systems. When they're, when it's usually the police coming in from outside that actually do, are, are making the arrests. And so I think that there's going to be a lot, I think there was a lot of thoughtful discussion about SROs. And I think the legislature understands them better. And I think that a lot of the systems where they have been having conflict on, on SRO issues will be incorporating a lot of that this year and that a bill will be back in next year. So whether there's any difference here where you work well with your SROs, but, but I think that your, your students will recognize, recognize that SROs, there was no change in who they are and what they're doing, but a better understanding of all that. The Health Department, rather than MSD will soon be overseeing school health facilities. And telehealth has, is being authorized as an ongoing thing. And so that's, I think that was an easy bill. Nobody, nobody had a problem with the telehealth bill, I don't think. Premenstrual products will be available to middle and high school girls. The products will be available in elementary schools as well, although only in one restroom, I believe. And the state is going to pay for the dispensers, but each system has to pay for the supplies. Also, you will be required to provide, when needed, a lactation space for a parenting student that has, they, they backed it down. At first it said they had to have a refrigerator and it had to have a sink and this and that other thing. But they backed that down a great deal. And, but it has to be appropriate space and it can't be in a restroom or a closet. They even said it couldn't be a closet. We talked last month about the FAFSA application. You do a great deal to, to make sure your students know about FAFSA and are the opportunity to apply for those. They did not make it a graduation requirement, although that was how the bill started out. And that was kind of absurd. So they came around on that. There's, there's a youth risk behavior survey, which is put out every two years, I believe. And it, it really gets at sexual and parental abuse and drugs and all kinds of behavior. And, and the legislature was startled, I think, by the fact of some of the kinds of questions that are asked in that. But it's, it's material that is consolidated, it's not individually identified at all. And it's the kind of data that is used then to say, okay, this county, in this county, this is a real youth issue and we need to be investing more money in this kind of service there. And, and so your students have probably, they're probably used to it. I don't know if any of you are very familiar with that. Do you remember that, that? Okay. Was it surprising?
Yeah. Guys are really into like personal like questions. Like I do, I do have the comment that it's kind of provocative, the kind of questions they ask. It tries to coach you to an answer.
It's what?
It tries to coach you to an answer, or appears to.
Oh, well, I don't know that, okay. There were no new graduation requirements this year and there was a little focus on curriculum. And that's a little bit of a difference. So again, I think that hopefully a student in your schools will be, there'll be more, more children in pre-K in, all over, in all the counties, whereas you already have been very much offering pre-K. Students with IEPs will now have to have an addendum so that if there's a 10-day or more delay in their ability to have in-school services, there's a modified education plan for such emergencies. And also, parents in the IEP world can request the school to pay for an independent educational evaluation as they're, under certain circumstances, as their children are being looked at, as they're dealing with the IEPs. We talked about the fact that you may, a student may end up being transported in something other than a red school bus, that if you choose to, you'll be, have the opportunity to use other forms of vehicles to transport. There'll still be rules, there'll still be review of safety and there'll be review of the drivers and so forth. But that's an option that you'll have. There's a lot of tutoring money, I think you probably know that, and that, that is going to be coming to you as part of the recovery, the learning gap, learning loss. And also, summer school, I understand here is already free for students repeating a course. But that's going to be true all over the state. Many, many counties charge now for summer school courses. There's, as I've said before, there's going to be a community school. There'll be a lot more services available as you are able to expand that concept in your community. The Board of Education will be able to improve some HVAC and roofs and windows through the $300 million placed in the Healthy Schools Facility Fund. And if your drinking water isn't already at the, less than five parts per billion of lead, it's going to be required that you reach that. It's, it's a, it's a higher standard even than the federal government. But, but our children will be drinking good water and many school systems are bringing in bottled water in most cases. We celebrate the emergent employees situation. Your staff members that are new, that where you have not had the opportunity to complete their 10-year employment record in a lot of, in a lot of detail, they will be allowed to be emergent employees for up to 60 days while that review is being completed. That was something that Mr. Trotta was so concerned about. And the minute the bill passed, I sent him an email and told him that this bill had passed. So he was very happy about that. There's going to gradually be better access to broadband. The, there'll be in the office of, in DHCD, there's going to be an office of statewide broadband. And there's a lot of federal money coming forth and as well as some of the state recovery money for reaching broadband. I think that we are getting to the point where broadband is going to be a utility, almost, just like electricity. It finally got to be in the, what, 30s or 40s when they had the, and the telephone system being, reaching all parts of the country. And as I say, it's, it's just, I think that, I hope that the children recognize that all that is being done for them and the opportunities that they are being given, that, that the state of Maryland and that you, using the resources that are available, are really providing the kind of education that is going to be of real value to them in, in, in their futures. And so I think that this was a constructive session and that we accomplished a lot despite the weird circumstances that we were all living in. I really want to thank Jamie Brown. She, she is ever available to answer questions, to send information, to communicate information. And, and then the quick, quick review team, I think we now call it something else, but your response team here, Mr. Bickford, Mr. Stauffer and Mrs. Williams, who, and as well as the superintendent, who would respond as any bits of information or questions and so forth were sent along. And the involvement of, of Mr. Stauffer as our representative on the, on the MAB Legislative Committee and Mrs. Williams as his alternate have been very, very valuable. So I think that you can be comfortable that, that the legislature actually, despite its unusual circumstances, has really worked hard to give you tools to even make this a better school system than it already is. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Cade. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Mrs. Cade this evening? Yes, Mr. BaKun.
Thank you, President Williams. I have a question relating to the HVAC through the Healthy Schools Funds. This question could probably go to Dr. Michael and you.
Kevin, can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, yes, I apologize. Yep, the question I have is relating to the HVAC and the Healthy Schools Facilities Fund. And this question, like I said, could either go to probably Dr. Michael or Mrs. Cade. With that 300 million, I know recently, in the past couple of board meetings, the board approved $1.3 million for the HVAC replacement at North Higurstown. So could that fund be, could that expenditure on that fund be covered through the Healthy Schools Funds?
I would ask Dr. Michael.
I think it's funding that's available, obviously with COVID and, you know, being an airborne virus type thing. I think it's to address a lot of those types of things, although it also mentioned roofs and windows. So I think it's for the purpose of just air quality, improving air quality, air filtration, those kinds of things. I'm not sure what, how much of that will be available to us, what the match is, similar to House Bill 1. Whatever that money's available, I'm sure that's going to require a local match to take advantage of it. And I think that's why that went to the seven big counties. They consistently were building schools without any match. And this is going to make that bonding money available to them. But I can't really answer your question completely, Mr. BaKun, but I think it's for projects similar to North Highs, but really to address air quality in a variety of ways.
Thank you for that answer. And Dr. Michael, just a follow-up. With that money, that if it were to be locally matched, would it be put in the capital fund or the general fund?
I think it'd be part of the capital fund.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cade.
Mrs. Cade, do you understand any of the confusion over, we're still waiting for what I call official MSD numbers? I don't know if that's the correct terminology or not. I mean, for years and years, we had the same formula. We would get an estimate in December. It would come out and the governor's budget would be almost to the penny of what they said in December. Obviously, a lot of formulas have changed. But we're still waiting on, I mean, it's been promised for two or three weeks now, numbers coming out. Is there, is that about how they're using the federal money and mixing and matching federal and state money? Do you have any idea why they haven't come out with final numbers?
No, I thought that the legislative report did include some of those numbers. But the legislature puts out, you know, it the legislature puts out, you know, its education report, but, and I didn't, I haven't studied that, so I don't know whether, what charts were in that, but I thought some of the relevant charts were in it. I'll, I'll, I'll do my bit of inquiry, and I'm sure you're doing yours, and we'll try and find that out, because.
Initially, the week of Sonny Die, potentially, we were going to get them on Friday, but no later than Monday. I mean, that now has been three, four weeks ago. I'm kind of mixed up, three weeks ago at least. And then there was the CFO's meeting last week that everybody, all the superintendents were anticipating they were going to bring not only those numbers, but, you know, some draft numbers or preliminary numbers for a couple of years out. And now we're hearing, it's still going to be maybe within another week away, and it'll only be FY '22. It won't be any estimates for FY '23. These are just bits and pieces of things I'm hearing, and I don't know any of them as facts. But I do know we're approaching June 30th, real quickly, and soon to be July 1 for the new year, and there's no final numbers yet from the state on a bill that passed two years ago, and then obviously had a lot of adjustments this year.
A lot of adjustments.
I'm also curious, I know the bill's funded through 2025, but I'm curious how much of that is with federal funding that might not be reoccurring. I'm not asking you these questions. These are things that are worrisome on my mind. But also, a lot of the things were pushed off, 2024, 24, 25, 26, 27. I mean, a lot of things are pushed out even beyond that funding of things. So I'm worried, when they say it's funded through 2025 and everything's been pushed out, including some of the things that are supposed to happen, what does all that mean? And I saw the formulas, all the numbers pushed out, they added three years onto the end of the original Kerwin bill, so just a lot of questions there for me.
And they have come out with, the State Board came out with a schedule of all the different pieces it has to do and so forth, but that doesn't give all the fiscal numbers. And so I think that people are finding it's a big task, for one thing, but trying to do a budget when you don't have figures is not very easy. I recognize that, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cade, I, I just want to note that with regard to the capital budget bill for FY 2022, $280 million sounds like a large amount of money for the state to be allocating for local school construction and renovation projects, and I, it didn't go, I didn't miss that you said that, that the larger counties will be getting a much heftier allocation than the smaller counties. And I know that you did a great deal of talking to legislators on our behalf as one of the smaller counties. My understanding is that fiscal year 2022 will be established as a floor for this match of 29%, 71% until 2025.
That's what I understand.
Okay, so my hope is looking at these grant programs that are listed, is that some of the smaller counties will be able to take advantage of these grants. And Dr. Michael, I'm hoping that you and staff have things in mind that we can apply for using this grant money, because I think we're all aware that it's a real challenge for us here in Washington County to get the local match.
Yes.
To be able to take advantage of all the state funds that could possibly come our way.
Well, and again, the, you know, the state funds may be available, but unless you can get the local match for many of these programs, it, it, it won't happen. So unless you had resources that, and so the local match is still a very important thing, but your local match is relatively small. Some counties have to match 50%, and your match is now, what, 21%, right?
29, 71, or 21, 79?
I think it's 21, 79.
21, 79.
Which is, you know, which you're getting four dot, four state, almost four state dollars for every one local dollar, and that's, that's a pretty good deal.
Right, so with the bulk of that money going to the larger counties and with us not being able to take advantage of what little else would come to us, we're sending a lot of money, or leaving a lot of money on the table for other jurisdictions to make use of.
Attention, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else have a question for Mrs. Cade or a comment?
I just want to thank Mrs. Cade for those in the public that have never met Mrs. Cade or, and don't know of her. Her experience in Annapolis goes back decades.
Till 75, 1975.
That's decades.
Decades.
So she goes way back, she has connections. I've been with Mrs. Cade, as have other board members, when we have MAB Legislative Day in Annapolis, and she has access to the senators and the delegates, and she knows them. And I appreciate, as I'm sure this board does, your work in Annapolis for us every year. You do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's, it, I'm glad to have the opportunity to, to, to be there and to, to be working on behalf of issues that I think are important, and to work with, with you and in a school system that I think is a very good school system, frankly. As I learn about other school systems, I can just almost always sit up with pride and say, but in Washington County, they already do pre-K, you know? In Washington County, they raise the teacher salaries, you know? And that's, it's a real joy. So I think you have a lot to be proud of. I know you have a lot to, to, to be concerned about, but, but I think that as a system, you, you do a very fine job and should be, the community should be appreciative of the kind of schools that you provide.
Thank you for those kind words, Mrs. Cade. You, you are invaluable to us.
Thank you.
And in the past, you have been our feet on the street in Annapolis. That wasn't the case this session, but to echo Mr. Stauffer's remarks, you, you get the job done, and, and you have the contacts, and you, you make those contacts, and we just so appreciate what you do on behalf of Washington County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for making the trip up.
My pleasure, and have a good summer.
Good.
Good whatever, whatever's coming.
Thank you for that final report.
All right.
Okay, continuing with reports to the board, we'll have board member committee reports at this time. Let's start with curriculum and instruction with Dr. Zentmeyer, please.
Our next meeting is May 17th at 3:00 PM here.
Thank you. Facilities Committee, Mr. Gessner.
Thank you. Facilities will be meeting this Friday at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, Finance Committee.
Yeah, we just met yesterday morning for a review of budget items, and we will be meeting again on Monday, June 7th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Human Resources, Mrs. Murray.
Human Resources will not meet again until August.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Policy Review and Development Committee, Mr. Bickford.
The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, April 27th. We obviously discussed the three policies that were submitted for first readings earlier in this meeting. We also discussed updates to our policies for pre-kindergarten, as well as when students can be admitted into pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade. And we reviewed student dismissal procedures and what the expectations are for students to be dismissed during school hours. We will have our next meeting on Tuesday, May 25th at 11:30, when we hopefully will be joined by Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mr. Bakun, you have anything from Student Government for us?
Yes, I do. The next General Assembly of the Washington County Associations of Student Councils is scheduled for May 12th. I do believe it, the time is around 6:30 to 7:00, going on nine minutes, but the time still has yet to be exactly determined. I'll definitely follow up and let you know. And in that General Assembly, the next student member of this Board of Education will be elected, and then it's going to be very exciting to watch the transition process. And even now, just looking at the next meetings we have, I only have three more business meetings left until the next student member picks up. So it's going to be quite eventful, and I do welcome all board members to attend that General Assembly, and more information will be followed up after this meeting and whenever the time is truly determined.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bakun. Under miscellaneous business this evening, we have future agenda items. You should have a future agenda item list as part of your packet in May. That's, we're in May, it's hard to believe. Our fir, this is our first meeting in May, and our second meeting in May, on May 18th. We will have an enrollment forecast report for the years 2021 through 2030. We'll also have a report regarding summer school plans. Then coming up in June, we have an annual report on the progress of the implementation of the educational equity policy and the action plan, and also the recommendations that will be coming from the District Committee on Assessments. So those are the future agenda items. If you have anything that you would like to see placed on an agenda, please let a member of the committee know. Mr. Bakun, would you like to begin down there? We'll do board member comments, and we'll start with you.
Thank you, President Williams. Today, I'd just like to take my board member comments to just put an emphasis on student mental health. Recently, we just finished with Mental Health Week with WCPS, and many students had opportunity to do SSL hours, I mean, do those projects for SSL hours, and get to learn more about the mental health and more ways that they can address it. And as we embark into testing season with all these AP exams, various professional exams like NCLEX, so many exams going on right now, I can't even keep track of them, just really want to address students and tell them, please take care of your mental health. Your mental health is very valuable to everyone in WCPS and students, and make sure you're aware of the resources you have to help you. I feel like too often, students don't know how many great mental health and physical health and all these health policies and programs WCPS in fact has. So reach out to your guidance counselor, reach out to your school health coordinator. There's so many different mental health resources, so many, you can see a psychologist, you can talk to guidance counselors, there's so many ways WCPS is here to help you. And anytime throughout the year, especially now testing season, focusing on your mental health, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bakun. Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I'd like to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and thank you to all of our teachers for their hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Dr. Zentmeyer?
To add on to that, a mother is a friend you never outgrow. And I was thinking about all of those people who mothered me through my life, and many of them were teachers. So Happy Mother's Day to all the teachers and staff who mother all of our students to success. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Mr. Stauffer?
I'll reiterate about Teacher Appreciation Week. As a former classroom teacher of many decades, I know what teachers do, and this, this board member truly appreciates the hard work of the teachers of Washington County through this last year. It's a year like no other that I've ever lived in my 70-some years on this earth, and I hope I never see another one like this, or the way it's affected education. I want to thank Mr. Eskridge and Ms. Corbell, the principals of Clear Spring High School and Clear Spring Middle School respectively. I visited those two schools about a week or so ago in my endeavor to try to educate myself or improve my knowledge of schools, and especially those schools that will be affected in any way by the possible closing of the two schools, Cascade and Hancock Middle Senior High School. Today, I visited Smithburg Elementary, and Ms. Wilson was very nice toward the building, answered my questions and so forth. And tomorrow, I do my last visit to Old Forge Elementary, and Mr. Ketsel has said, you know, I'll show you the school and answer all, any questions that you may have and so forth. This last thing, I debated whether to say it, but county commissioners have identified schools as economic drivers and so forth. And so if that is true, then I'm going to use an euphemistic version of an old adage. If schools of Washington County are truly economic drivers, then it's time to put funding where your words are, and the time is to do it now. You county commissioners need to educate yourselves about what goes on in public schools and what teachers and staff members have to deal with in 2021, not 1960, not 1970, not 1980, 1990, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer, and amen. Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, well said. So I, I was thinking about, we get, we hear about social media a lot and the negative things on social media, but one of the, the positive things I think about social media is especially this week, every time I'm logging on to Facebook, I'm seeing shout-outs for all the teachers, so I really appreciate that. And I'm also seeing pictures of all the gifts the teachers are getting at the various schools, so I want to thank the people who are organizing those as well. And of course, a special shout-out to my favorite teacher, who's my wife, and my second favorite teacher, who is my father, who could be sitting at home enjoying retirement, living three blocks away from the beach, and yet every day, he gets up and goes to an alternative high school in his community in Long Island to teach. So I really appreciate him as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mr. Gessner?
I will have anything today.
Thank you, Mr. Gessner. Mr. Evans?
Well, first, I have to give a shout-out to my lovely mother, whose birthday is today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mom. She would be very upset if I told everyone how old she is, so I will not say that she makes 64 look like the new 30. And she is a phenomenal human being, and I love you, Mom. And with that being said, obviously, Happy Mother's Day to everyone out there, just like Teacher Appreciation Week and Mother's Day. I don't know why we only pick one day to celebrate it. We should definitely celebrate it every day. It takes a village to build a community and, or to raise a child, and all the work that mothers, teachers, administrators, and admin assistants, everyone does to make the schools a better place. It, it should be celebrated every day. I like to say this is more of a teacher highlight week than, than a appreciation week, because we appreciate you all the time. So thank you for all the hard work you do, and I saw the proof of all of that as well, like Mr. Stauffer. I personally got a chance to visit, over the past couple of weeks here, I, I had a chance to visit Cascade Elementary, Hancock Middle Senior, as well as Emma K. Dobbs. And I'll tell you, Mrs. Cade is not wrong when she says we are the best. Every one of the kids absolutely phenomenal. Went over to Cascade Elementary first thing in the morning, and man, seen those little kindergartners get off the bus, all excited to see their principals and their teachers and everyone. It's, it's incredible. The enthusiasm is there from the students all the way up through the staff, and it's, it's great to see. So thank you, everyone, for all the work you do. And lastly, have to give a shout-out to my alma mater, who Keystone College, who is playing for their 12th consecutive conference championship this week, so go Giants.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Knowing that it's Teacher Appreciation Week this week, I've been doing some reflecting. As a product of Washington County Public Schools, I was privileged, I was blessed to have wonderful teachers throughout my elementary education, my middle school, and my high school. It's because of those teachers that, that I decided that I wanted to be a teacher. And I've been blessed to work with the finest in Washington County. We continue to have wonderfully talented and giving, giving teachers in Washington County, remarkable teachers, teachers who do wonderful things, incredible things each and every day in face of terrific challenges and obstacles. So teachers out there, I wish you a wonderful week. I wish you a wonderful end of the school year. Please know that you're valued. Please know that we care, and thank you for all you do. Dr. Michael, do you have any parting words?
I don't know about parting words, we're probably something I forgot.
I don't know about parting words, we're probably something I forgot to mention in my report. Copies of the superintendent's report regarding the board's charge are available at Cascade, Old Forge, Smithburg Elementary, Hancock Elementary, Hancock Middle Senior High School, Clear Spring Middle, and Clear Spring High, if I didn't mention those.
It's online, too, right?
And it's online, but hard copies are available at each of those schools, and we can get more if we run out.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else have anything? If not, I look forward to seeing you at our work session coming up. Thank you for a great day of meetings, and we're adjourned. Thank you.